Back in session, so Madam Clerk, item number five, which is obvious.
Mr. President, we need to do the consent agenda first, items one through four, but item two- Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and move those, that'd be quick.
It's just one-
I moved up, doc number one.
Okay, all in favor, on the consent agenda, please raise your hand.
It's unanimous, but make a note that item two has been withdrawn, that contract is not ready at this time.
On the farmer's market?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Item five, resolution of a permanent nature-
Number three, did you get them all?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I got them all.
Everybody, it was unanimous. Resolution of a permanent nature, authorize and merit execute guarantee agreement related to debt financing for Jackson Hospital and Clinic Incorporated.
Mr. President.
Ms. Semasky.
One of the things that I think that we've talked about over the past weekend, I wanna stress is something that we wanna make sure we do, because I think it's important that whether any deal that the city does, that it's well-vetted and well-executed, because this hospital is very, very important to us. And so, we had talked about some contingencies that we just wanted to see documentation, I know most of that has come through, that we wanna make sure that what we are being told is actually correct, that we have the opportunity to vet this. This landed in my lap, this copy of this eighty, ninety-page document landed in my lap on Tuesday. Okay, now we've had time to go through it, I think that making sure that this path forward is a path forward that will keep the hospital solvent, prepare them for their next phase, potential restructuring and what have you. We have the substitute resolution, I think I passed it out to everybody, if anybody didn't get a copy of it, I'll pass it along. It includes just a simple list of things that we wanna make sure we have seen, that representation for the council and the city has seen, to make sure that the number that we are committed, and that we are being committed to do by ourselves, without the county, state, surrounding municipalities, without anybody, we wanna make sure, I wanna make sure, 'cause I'm not a hospital administrator, I wanna make sure that everything that we have been told is not just on good faith, and we've had good productive meetings with the transition team, but we have talked about having somebody help inform this council to make sure that we are doing, not just for this situation, but for any deal when it comes to dealing with potentially leveraging twenty million dollars of taxpayer dollars, so that we feel good about that. So, I've offered up a substitute, it has a list of very basic things, I think most of it has already been produced. I would like to have us have that vetted, so we can move forward with confidence.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Semasky. I need to go.
Mr. Calhoun.
Mr. Pruitt.
That's, that's, that was the question, can, can somebody from Jackson come up, please?
We got, we got some people that's gonna talk from Jackson, I'll call them up.
Okay, I just wanted to see if, what Andrew's talking about, if it takes two weeks, it takes three weeks, it takes two days, whatever, what does that do to you guys? Where, where are we at in the process?
So, we are in a position where we don't have time to waste for two weeks, even two days may be difficult. I am facing a payroll next week for the employees of the hospital, with a payroll that we may not be able to make unless we have this guarantee in place, and it is really important to us as a hospital that we have worked diligently to give you all this information and vetted it. It's our reputation on the line, just like your reputations are on the line making decisions here today. To the extent that somebody wants to come out this weekend or on Monday, I would more than, more than willing to walk through it with someone who can, who can get comfortable with it, I can answer anyone's questions, I've presented myself for the city council multiple times now on these issues, and have been available to answer questions that people have asked us at this point. I really don't wanna be in a position where we have to do something as drastic as issuing Warnock notices and shutting down this hospital over the next six days.
Let me get your name, hold on, 'cause I don't think you, what's your name for the record, sir, for the clerk?
Alan Wieland.
Last name?
Wieland, W-I-L-I-N.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson.
Uh, Mr. Wiley, I, uh, really was hoping not to hear you say payroll. I, I was really hoping not to hear that, 'cause what that did was just set me back. Uh, because saying payroll, that's this month, next month it'll be payroll again, and then another month. And so, that'll set us as a city going further and further in, and we've seen this, and I just wanna say to the public, we've seen this happen in Evergreen currently, right now Evergreen Hospital is closing, because their city decided to help this hospital for the quality of life of their residents, because that was their only hospital. And they continually helped and helped until now they have no more cash in reserves to help, to continue to run the city, not a private business. And now they, they're at a loss, no hospital, no reserves, so what does that city do? From using public dollars to invest in a private entity to pay your salaries. One thing we requested, uh, one second, Mr. Wiley, one, one thing that we requested was an audit, um, and, and to understand where we are financially and what that full picture looks like. Because we need a full picture, because right now it's just a blanket request without us having anything. And I know at the end of the day, as citizens, you want us to be making sound decisions with the taxpayers' dollars, 'cause again, this is public money. And this isn't, at, at this juncture, because this has become a healthcare crisis. This isn't just about Jackson Hospital anymore. This goes to show that other hospitals are closing outside of us, and I thank you for all the work that you are doing in the healthcare field. I have a godmother right now at Jackson that is unconscious, so this hits everyone hard, it does. But we have to ensure that we're making a sound decision, and it's not just about the city. Now, healthcare crisis means it includes the county, the tri-county area, and the state of Alabama. It was a wonderful rally that just happened for the city, we need to do the same thing at the state house. Because if this had happened ten years ago, and we had closed the insurance gap, we may not be having this conversation today. And so, this is a larger issue that we need to look at and not put a Band-Aid for just thirty days. 'Cause these thirty days will have you all back here at our council meeting, with no county commissioner here, no state house rep, and no one from the governor's office. And so, this is something we, we just need a moment. We can't, we can't have a demand on us from a private entity telling us what we need to do by a deadline with public dollars. We need to be able to have an attorney to look over these documents so we can make a sound decision. That's just like us asking you to, just think about if you went and signed a car loan for your child, you know what's gonna happen, 'cause they ain't never had a home, a car loan, and what's gonna happen after thirty days and sixty days, because this, their first attempt at this. There, there, it's probably gonna be some repercussions and it's gonna hit your credit. So, that's what this looks like, as a guarantor, if, if it's the default. We, we have to provide that fund, so it may not be money today, but a guarantor is money, and we'll have to provide that money. And that's gonna hit our credit rating, which is amazing right now in the city of Montgomery. But, that thirty-six point six million dollars that we got for the Hamilton-McGumry Trail, the bond refinance that we did to redo these community centers, that by the way, twenty million dollars is providing us a community center for the next fifty years, not thirty days. These are the decisions that we have to make, and they can't be rushed, so we just need time.
Ms. Johnson, can I just correct something, that you misunderstood what we're asking for? So, first of all, in Evergreen, they put actual dollars up. When we came, we're not asking for any money from the city today in actual cash. We're asking for a guarantee as a credit enhancement, when the assets of the hospital are worth over a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Okay, and you will have a first-position lien on the assets of that hospital, okay? The receivables alone, we collect twenty million dollars a month in cash collections. There are fifty million dollars in accounts receivable today. It will take thirty days to, to collect enough cash to pay this back if you ever had to go and use the guarantee. I don't foresee the guarantee ever being called, if it is called, the likelihood of having collateral back it at five times what the, what the guarantee is, is, provides you with the protection that the city is not going to be out twenty million dollars at the end of the day.
Could you provide that in a legal standing document? And because at, at this moment, when you go through bankruptcy, we won't be the first, we won't be the first. If you, you go through bankruptcy, we won't be the first, unless this is provided, but how, if you haven't been appointed yet, is, is, is my, is my stance.
At a minimum, you would be a first lien creditor in a bankruptcy with existing bondholders on all of the assets. And maybe your council can explain that a little further today to all of you, so that you understand that issue.
We'll need more than today to listen to a council from an attorney to get, make that decision, to see that in real time.
Mr. President, I got a question.
Mr. Bryant.
Alan, we, the, the cash flow, I looked at your receivables, and you got forty-nine million, and I, I spoke to you today. How much do that realistically, and I realize that some is old, and, and, and we've talked about the past, and what they did and did not do, and we can't go back and undo those things. How realistically are we gonna be able to get most of that forty-nine million?
I think you collected almost all of it.
Okay, okay.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Ms. Riley.
Um, have you all heard anything from the county and the state? Let me ask that question, have y'all heard anything from the county and the state on this, on this issue?
County has said no.
State?
I have not spoken to the state personally, others have on our behalf, and the answer has been no.
Okay, well, I have another question, so do you have any potential buyers?
We do have potential buyers, we have buyers every day who contact us. But no one is going to do anything at this point in time until we are actually in a bankruptcy environment, so that we can sell this hospital in an appropriate manner with the protections provided by the chapter eleven of the bankruptcy code.
Uh, Mr. President, Stacy, could you provide just a, a, a legal state at this point? Does this sound like something that the city could legally do with public dollars for a private entity?
There is an exception for economic development, and when this was first mentioned to my office, I did conduct some research. There are opinions that do allow specifically for a hospital to provide funding to a hospital as a form of economic development.
Mr. President, hearing what our city attorney just said, you know, it's almost always that on a major economic development, our project, the city, the county, and the state split those calls. Very, very rarely is a city asked to carry any sizable or significant economic development project alone. So, if this is to be considered economic development, then certainly I would expect the county and the state to participate in this guarantee that's been asked for. I, I can't remember my five years being here, any significant project that we've gone after, where we have not had some help from the city, sorry, from the county or the state to go along with what we were doing here at the city. If it is to be considered economic development, if not, it violates the gratuity law. So, if it is to be considered economic development, then certainly the county and the state should put in on this like we do any other job. We just had an announcement yesterday, there was good collaboration, I would expect that to be the case there, so the city does not have to carry this guarantee all along.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, any other council members?
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, and I think we've gone back and forth, we're taking, you know, at this point, when I really went, you know, Clint, we spoke earlier as well. My frustration comes from getting, I mean, getting handed some of this and being asked to turn it around so quickly on good faith, and I've not had a, we've not had an opinion, Stacy, I don't know if you've heard, had anybody weigh in on, on your side, but I've not had an opinion on this, and on top of that, we've got a draft version of the agreement. Do we have a final copy of what this agreement is? Has anybody seen a final copy? I mean, if, the point is, is to go on this because, look, obviously, we wanna make sure that we are keeping the hospital solvent, we want to keep the hospital operations going. The question I think some of us are asking is, is that, is it, it's, does it have to be right now? And if we knew that today was gonna be the day, and this really isn't for y'all, but it's for the council, is why we, why this is coming to a head, where we're getting this dropped in our laps on Tuesday, and then being turned around without any outside council opinion, without guidance from, and vetting of the numbers, without seeing any of these things that I'd like to see in writing, just to make sure, just to make sure. Again, I, we, I know that there's twenty-one hundred people that we care deeply about preserving jobs for, a hundred and seventy-six thousand visits that happened last year. But I think that for a decision of this nature, it is important for us, as we spoke about, that we have, that we feel really good, and we have an opinion on this. We, we, we talked about engaging council, we talked about having somebody look at cash flow statements, take a look at the list of the receivables, get a breakdown of the sources and uses of revenues, talk about how we were gonna be a part and a player, you know, at the table, whether it be in management decision meetings or at the board. I mean, the, the, if I was doing this deal for, for anything else, I think we would ask the same questions, and one thing that comes with those economic development packages is that all of that is vetted out ahead of time and then presented. And seeing this still in draft form in my agenda package today just makes me wonder, before we authorize this amount of money, that we know that everything that's being said to us is right, and if it is, great. And if it is, and the city and the county, or the state and the county and other players won't help us, then shame on them, and we'll go for it anyway. It's not resistance to helping the hospital that's giving me pause, it's concern that we have not had time to do our due diligence as the nine people elected to represent the citizens of Montgomery.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, can I say something?
Mr. Grant.
Guys from Jackson Hospital, some of us look at financial, we, we all probably look at financials at different times, we probably don't look at hospital financials, we, we don't, I'm being honest, we don't. I was able to spend some time today, CPA and doctor and surgeon, I got comfortable with it, but I fully understand, I, I, I fully understand, because I had to, I couldn't figure out the, the receivables. I, I got one sheet, another sheet, and a zero B, and, and Alan was very informative that you said that's what we wanted, we build for, and this is what we get to build for. That was incredible, that was informing, I, I feel comfortable, but I do not hold it against these guys for not, I mean, we gotta get comfortable, and I, I guess what I would say to everybody, can we get comfortable by Tuesday coming up to vote? Can y'all get comfortable by Tuesday?
With all these questions answered, absolutely, with all these questions answered, and a valuable plan.
Andrew?
If they even go into bankruptcy, they will need a plan.
I mean, will y'all give them-
One at a time, go ahead.
Can y'all give a tour tomorrow or something through the hospital and walk? I, I don't know that everybody's fully under aware that what you do own and don't own.
Here's a, but here's, here's something that I think is really important, really important for us to, to think about here, is that, and, and council prick was just asking, you know, where is it in the agreement? In the final version of the agreement that's been vetted by us, by Stacy and her team, that puts us in first position? Where is it that outlines all of these things that we asked, we said that we wanted?
Right, now we absolutely do.
You know, okay? And again, whether, whether or not, trust me, as we said, I, I understand the case that you're making, and I'm sorry that some of us didn't get written on this earlier, or could have asked for some of this earlier, but this is, this is the decision that we're being asked. But this is, this is the decision that we're being asked. To your point, where does it say that we're in first position? And 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 where does it say that as somebody who is basically a guarantor on this bond, that the bond issuer isn't inherently already in front of us? That was one of the questions that we walked away asking ourselves. And I would like to have that spelled out for us. I would like to have the confidence of the council, mayor's office, city attorney, to know that that's exactly where we are because we're being asked to do this on our own and by ourselves. We have no way to mitigate this risk. So my name is Clint Graves. I'm with Gilpin Gavan. I represent the hospital. Uh, your counsel is here as well, David Smith with Bradley A. Rent. They are in the process of negotiating that agreement and working through a final draft, um, to get to you. But what I would say is, don't approve the guarantee if you don't get that, okay? Make that a requirement. But I mean, but but I have to say.
Say that again.
Say that again.
But I have, so he he here's the timeframe we're in, okay? What, I'll go back. If that is the requirement, then make that the requirement, okay? But here's the time problem we have. In order to vote and approve this guarantee under Amendment seven seventy-two to the Constitution, the Economic Development Amendment, there has to be published notice of the meeting at which the resolution is considered. It has to be published seven days prior to the meeting. We don't have seven days. Now, we've been talking about this. We first met with the city council in November. Okay, we are a long way from November, and, look, we had a lot go on. We had the snow days that first derailed the first meeting that we were going to have. But we're running out of time. But procedurally, we don't have the time. We, I'd love to come back Monday or Tuesday after you have some time to look at it again. But we we can't procedurally do that. We'd have to wait. If we published, we'd have to publish notice in the paper, wait for that paper to come out, and then have a meeting seven days after that, which is what we had to do for this meeting.
Ms. Brenda, there's there's a seven days we just did. Does that affect what we're talking about?
I know with council protocol, you get always carried over to the next meeting and not give notice. So I don't think that would be germane to council action. Now, you can correct me, something in your statute requires that, but.
Uh, if your council will opine to that, then that's that's not really up to me. Because that's that's really where we're at here is, I'm seeing this, you know, this super priority senior secured debtor and possession credit agreement in draft form. Yeah, I think we want to have that in a final format that does guarantee everything that we are, that is, that's the risk mitigator, right? That is what says that if this thing doesn't work, and I know that there is a path that says that this could work, but if this thing does not work, and even we go all the way down to the liquidation stage, that the first twenty-point-five million dollars that comes out is our guarantee. That is not finalized. And in any deal, hospital or not, that is something that we should want to see guaranteed. And if, and and the timetable, a reasonable timetable to to vet through that process, sure. To come back as a council and feel really good about that piece, because that is the most important key key piece to preserving our credit rating for as a city going forward and of being, as I said, stewards of taxpayer dollars. We need that piece to move forward.
Yeah, and Mr. President?
I understand that, but you can instruct your council to say that.
Sure, sure.
Okay? But but that resolution. That resolution authorizes, I mean, if you authorize the agreement, the resolution doesn't require that agreement in that form. Okay, there's provision in that resolution that allows that res, that guarant, guarantee agreement to be finalized and approved, subject to the, the, subject to changes, uh, made by the discretion of the mayor.
So, Mr. President, let let's talk about timelines. I I want to be real realistic because you gave us your legal timelines. Let's talk about city government timelines. For this, for, uh, we have to approve it. It goes through a process. The mayor has to sign it. Guess what? That won't be done in a week. So you'll still belly up because this won't be done in a week, in real time. So even in in filing bankruptcy and you going through all of that, that's not done in a week. You giving us this information, it won't be done in a week. And if your bottom line is what you just stated to us publicly, why can't you go to the bondholder? And because they are right now currently at risk, they're at risk. So why can't you go to them and ask them for this twenty-point-five million dollars to front to continue this bond to give you the extra time you need because it's for your operating costs? Any other time a nonprofit has approached this council, and I'm the first to say it because I'm always the one to say it. We do not do operating costs for any business, any for-profit, any nonprofit. When they approach us for requests, it's something for the benefit of the community. That's public dollars. You know that, attorney. Any public dollar, it goes to the benefit and the greater good of the people. This is for the benefit and the greater good of Jackson. So that's, that is where we are. And 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 I need like, I need a question answered publicly. From the twenty-one hundred to twenty-five hundred employees and where they reside, have their cities stepped up and tried to save Jackson Hospital?
Right now, the answer is, if you include the city of Montgomery, no city has stepped up to put up any money.
Have their counties stepped up?
No county has put up any money.
Have their state legislators stepped up?
No, they have not.
Publicly.
I need to ask another question also, Mr. President.
We're going to get through with the discussion. I got some people want to talk, so.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Lane. I'm going to make a statement, and the mayor asked that he he say something before we move to our public communication. But go ahead, Ms. Lane.
I just want to ask one more question about that. Have you all heard from any regional partners?
I think the answer is no.
We just, we just want to, we just want to put it on record. That's why I'm asking these questions. Any regional partners? Have y'all heard anything?
Who are the regional partners?
What do you mean, regional partners?
Mr. Chairman. I just got to say, you know, we're playing with people's jobs and people's lives today. We've picked, we've penny picked this sucker for a month, for weeks or whatever, trying to find every little issue where we didn't have to do it. But we're worried about, I'm worried about the people that got jobs, the image of Montgomery, the doctors that are here, the doctors that we need to have in here, and the people in those beds at hospital that may not get to stay. They may die because of this.
Okay, all right. Give the applause. Give the applause. I mean, you might be making a great statement. We understand that. But I'm not saying that you're not nearby yourself. This whole council is concerned about the jobs of the people at Jackson. But the thing that you have to understand, we're trying to fix health care in Montgomery County. And not just Jackson because we're looking at twenty million dollars today. And if we don't get into bankruptcy and the sales don't go through, we're in the same situation six months from now. So is it twenty more million? So the city is on the hook for forty million? We want to save your jobs long term, longevity. So we're looking at things about health care, uh, authorities to put money into a coffer that we can help when these situations come. We're not saying no to Jackson and no to none of the employees and none to the patients. But there's a process that we have to take. We can fix this, put Band-Aid on a council today. What do we do in six months? I understand. I've been.
But you're not going to work out.
Listen to that. I know it's not going to work out, but the point that we're talking, we've been meeting since twenty twenty-three. And I've been in those meetings since twenty twenty-three. I was told in twenty, not with this group. In twenty twenty-three, if we don't get the money by twelve-thirty-one, we close the doors in January. We went through twenty twenty-three and all of twenty twenty-four. We're sitting at the table today to make the best decision for the employees at Jackson, the patient at Jackson, and Montgomery. That's what we was elected to do.
Yes.
And that's what we're going to do. And I know we got a lot of people saying, Jackson, Jackson, we're going to get people. But we're trying to save this long term. We can fix Jackson with twenty mil, or we may not fix Jackson with twenty million dollars or twenty-one million dollars. We got to fix health care in this city, in this state, in this country forever. And we won't be coming to the table. We can say, let's, let's do this, but it's all about what do we do for health care? And my colleagues are asking about partnerships. The governor is having a state of the state address on the fourth. We know what Medicaid, and we talked to these these partners, what Medicaid expansion would have done for health care. No one wants, because it's not, it's not politics. Health care is not about political size, Democrat, Republican, independent. It's about sickness don't find nobody, rich or poor. So we got to fix this long term, and we got to think long term. I know it's emotional. We empathize with that. But we got to say what's right and do what's right. These guys got a good plan, but my colleagues are asking for some questions that needs to be answered. It needs to be answered. We here six months. So we say, in six months, oh, we got to do the same thing over again. We need ten million. We need twenty million with no partners. We look at the numbers. We know what it looks like. The pie breaks down. Yes, Montgomery's fifty-one percent. Forty-nine percent comes from outside, makes money. But you think about what this city tried to do in twenty twenty. An occupational tax that would help these type situations that we deal with on a daily basis, from public safety, from health care, anything that the city need.
You were talking about the hospital.
Let me finish. I got the mic now. I didn't stop nobody when they talking. So my point is, we fix these things. Everybody comes to Montgomery to be the savior, but when Montgomery asks for something, no one wants to help. But Montgomery is the stream, the river that drives all streams. We drive it all. We know about people coming from Elmo and all around to work in Montgomery. But Montgomery is the catalyst that makes it all. If Montgomery fails, the whole region fails. So it has to come out. It's not about Jackson Hospital, Baptist House. It's about health care. And so we got to come up and focus on health care. We can do twenty million dollars. Everybody can raise their hand and say that. But the question have been asked that we need to know, because we got to be good stewards of the dollars that's going to be spent in the city of Montgomery. And anything has come before this council in a package in two or three days, whether it's coming from the mayor's office or anyone. We don't know anything about that. We going to carry this over. We're not going to do it. So let's do the due diligence and do what's right within the city and make the right choice. It don't have to be made today. The hospital is not going to close on on February the third or February the fourth. The law says it has to go sixty, sixty-five days. So we got time to figure this out and make it right. We're not saying no on the twenty-point-five million dollars. We saying we need time. We might come back in two weeks and say, hey, mayor, we need to do this. Counsel, we need to do this because these questions have been answered. We think this is a good process going forward. Let's make it happen. And we rolling dice on that. Make that risk to save jobs, save this community, save economic development in the city of Montgomery, in this county. But like we say, no one is at the table. We're on it, on the hook, hook for it right now. Well, let's do what's right. Let's think this thing through and fix health care. And help, Jackson is a part of our health care system. We're not trying to let Jackson close and 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 push this down, down the road. We're not kicking this can. But I'd have heard this in January of twenty twenty-three, and nothing against this group, nothing against me and, uh, General Corr been talking about this. I'm passionate about it. But we got to do what's right. I don't want to do this and then in 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 five months, we say, hey, we're back at the same point we were six months ago. And then we got the same auditorium full of people saying we need twenty-five more million dollars or whatever, because now we twenty in. So you're going to have to do what's next and save the same jobs that we're trying to save today. So let's fix it and get it right before we go forward.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Every, every trip takes the first step. All we're asking for today is the first step. And I think we need to make a step because this thing's been going on too long. It's time for us to finish and get on to down the road. This thing is an authorization for the mayor to do it, do the, uh, the guarantee.
With the provisions.
With provisions, and he could do that. But we need to go ahead and do something to get this thing done and get started because I'm with you. We got a big, we got a big problem down the road. We got to solve. But you can't solve that one time. You got to do one step at a time till you get there. And it'd take us for a whole year to get the folks together to do the things that you really want to do. I understand that. And I think the whole system with health care in Montgomery has changed because the population has changed and the system itself has changed. But we can't fix that today. We can't fix that in the next two weeks. You got to have something now that gets us down the road. And this authorizes the mayor to do that for the first twenty thou, twenty million dollars, and that's all it does. It doesn't take any cash out of our pocket. We put cash into other things. I guarantee you the seventy-five jobs that were advertised yesterday cost the city some money that had been put in that deal now for seventy-five jobs. Now, we're talking about twenty million, five hundred, but twenty-four, twenty-five hundred jobs. I mean, I think the bottom line, economic development, this is the real deal. And so I'm ready to vote this thing now and get it on down the road, give it to the mayor and the mayor.
And, Mr. President.
Oh, 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 Mr. Smith, Mr. Jim Wright, I agree with you one hundred percent. Everything takes a first step, but it got to be the right first step. I don't want to take one step forward in five hours. And so that's what we got to look at. We got to fix it. And I think leverage from from a city council standpoint, the leverage that we need, we got to call everybody to the carpet. Everybody needs to come to the table. We talk about the legislators going in on the floor. They can't escape on this. They can't just hide behind Montgomery. They got to be called to the forefront. They got to be called to the forefront. And no one from our state legislatures in here right now. We have met with them. They have walked out of and shot us smoke in a pipe every time we met with them. So we got to call them out. So our opportunity is on February the fourth. We need to pack out down there when the governor is doing our state of state with the same signs that we had on yesterday. And we need to go out there and say, and let them tell the people no. And if they say no, then the city of Montgomery was not going to let Jackson fail. We would do what we need to do. But if we go ahead and say, we going to give the twenty million dollars a day, we have no leverage to go talk to the legislators or the governor about what we need in the city of Montgomery. And this is the capital city. It's not about rural hospital. This is the capital city, central Alabama. This is the capital city. Money goes north, money goes south, money goes down to the beach. It was announced today that we're going to spend forty million dollars on roads. We don't need roads if we can't get to a hospital. So we got to look at what we're doing, and I'm not saying that that, I'm I'm passionate about Jackson. I'd have met, Ed, I'd have met with this whole team. But we got to make the right choice today. And we're not saying no. We're not giving it. We're buying time to do what's right. And if it got to happen today in the club, well, we got to roll them dice. It's sixty days to get it right with all partners that say, we're in this together. So if the Montgomery goes with the twenty-point-five, we need some from the state. So we going to guarantee if you fail, we can give you an occupational tax that can help you with the things that you need. We can give you a health care tax that can help you with the things that we do. But until they say that, we we're just left out. If we just vote to say, let's do it today?
Let me, uh, with your indulgence.
Hang on one second. And Mr. Calhoun, I agree with everything you say, but the bottom line is ain't nobody coming to help us.
Because we ain't asking.
Yes, we have. We've asked them to meetings at the chamber. The chamber has said they will coordinate, you know, meetings after the fact with this, with with the surrounding counties, with our state legislature. And the bottom line is, they're not coming. We can sit up here and beat the drums and say, hey, they need to stand with us. They're not coming, but in the process, we're going to let twenty-five hundred people drown. And here's the problem. Here's the problem. We want to push this thing down the road again today if that's what we want to do. These people are going to get sick and tired. No one will find a job somewhere else. And all those people in those two-hundred-and-fifty-six beds are not going to have somebody to care for them. You know, I don't, I don't know if they're telling the truth. I believe the man that they've got to have the money now. But the problem is, if we don't get it, there's nurses and doctors out here that are tired and want to know that they ain't got to beg for a job on Monday. I I wouldn't want that. I wouldn't want that. I would want some sort of job security. And like the mayor said, I I think it is absolutely economic development. I think everybody should be at the table. But they ain't coming.
Okay.
They're not, hang on. I'd like for our attorney to come up.
Let me.
How how is he our attorney?
Let me, let me.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
Let me make, um, just, just, just a general statement. You know, Jackson Hospital has existed here for more than seventy-five years. And it has never been here to the city or anybody else to ask for anything. And the one thing I want, I want to be resounding about, we're, this hospital is asking for a guarantee, no cash. There is a difference. And and the way that it's it's solidified is very, very clear to me. Should there become a problem where you you be called upon to execute that twenty million dollars? We've got assets sitting right there, ready to make you whole as the first individual in line. So that's clear. Now, you know, we we we.
Hold on, General, let me stop you right there. Hold on, let me, let me stop you right there. That's, that has not been clear. That was one of the question that we asked. Because what my understanding is, what we're guaranteeing, what we're guaranteeing only twenty million dollars, even though it's not cash, is in a letter. We're guaranteeing on the money that Jackson Hospital will go out and borrow against that. So we guaranteeing that the bondholders will be paid, not the city of Montgomery will receive the back. Listen to that. Okay, everybody has their own interpretation of what has been said. So my thing is, from a. Can I correct that for somebody? I'm talking right now, and I'm going to let you finish. That's what we get. Mr. Jim Wright had asked this question on several occasions. No one has answered that question specifically. Am I right, child?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. President, I do.
That's reason you giving the mayor the, the opportunity with this resolution to to add that to the, to the, to the guarantee.
Okay.
And we're giving the mayor the opportunity to do all of that for us in the guarantee. And as the attorney for Jackson Hospital says, add it to the, to your request, and you're done.
Okay.
This is not complicated. This is not brain science. This is, this is real world.
Mr. President, I do.
All right, we're going to take two more. We're going to move on.
I'm not seeking that. Hey, it's not that.
General, I do want to correct you. Jackson has actually approached us. When I first got in the office three and a half years ago, I sat in the office with the last administration during the ARPA-Dollar release. And they were requesting eighteen to twenty-one million dollars for this same reason and that they were closed. And I approached the council and the mayor when we were doing our ARPA-Dollar meetings with Doug Singleton as county commissioner. We all sat in those meetings with the CEO, the COO, and the CFO, Commissioner Sankey went. We all went through those. Glenn went. We have been requested on multiple occasions since I've been in this seat, three times, to save Jackson because they were bottomed out and they didn't have the finances. So that is incorrect.
Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry. Can I just say one thing for everyone? Just so, I think it's really important for everybody here. Um, you know, I am a restructuring officer. Ron turns around troubled healthcare, very differently than administration was here before. We have made great strides in this hospital in improving its cash flow and operations. And what we are looking for here is just a bridge to a sale transaction. The idea would be to go into a, a Chapter eleven filing with the support here, the bondholders who would fund the funds to get us through this period with the guarantee from the city. And when we sell this hospital in the next three to six months timeframe, we have already hired an investment banker who has already started the process of, of looking for buyers. You will not be seeing us here again in the future, okay? You will have a buyer who has a hospital which has no debt on it at that point in time after they've bought the hospital. Okay? They will have a fully functioning hospital that is operationally solvent, is able to bill and collect, because that's a big part of what Mr. Dreskin and I have done, has put together a process where we have a, a long-term feasible hospital for this community. And I would hate to see that end over a political issue related to who is gonna support the hospital or not here. I've not asked for money. I've asked for this guarantee as a way of, it's a short-term process. The hope would be that you're in and out in less than six months of this process. So within this calendar year, this will all be done. And the, the guarantee will be, will go away as a result of it.
Mr. President, can I ask you one?
Then Mayor Reed and we'll move forward.
Alan, so let me go back. Sell the hospital, there'll be no debt. So our note at that point would get paid off, correct?
Your note, the note that you would be guaranteeing
Yes.
is the first thing.
Okay.
So the first twenty-point-five million dollars that comes in from the sale pays off the note that you would be guaranteeing, and your guarantee would just disappear.
Daddy.
Okay.
You got a draft.
Yeah, yeah. But that, that, that's exactly the position that we want to make sure that we are in. In a written document that's, that has been told to me by an attorney that, that says that's the case. I agree. We met. Everything sounded good. But being in first position on the first twenty-point-five million dollars, that's the linchpin that we're, that's the due diligence in any deal, right? That's, that's exact, Clinton, that's what we talked about earlier as well, is one, I have not seen that, that, that signed agreement that says exactly that.
So I would ask the, the city council then to preface and vote on the issue with the contingent piece that the agreement that gets, that gets signed in the end provides for exactly that.
Yeah, and, and again, that's why when I came to all of you all with this, with these contingencies, the questions to get answered in writing, to be delivered to the council is so that we had all of the information that we needed to know exactly what position we were putting the city in by agreeing to something that I agree we need to do, okay? Whether it be for the total amount or you get the county involved, whatever, we have got to do something to make this hospital solvent and operational for the future, for sure.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Samaski. Go ahead, uh, General, finish your statement. Then Mayor Reed and we'll close out. Go to the public communication and we'll call for a vote.
Okay, what I was about to say that, uh, I know each and every one of you up there, and I know you're honorable people and you want to do what's right. And I would challenge you to look for reasons that you can support rather than reasons why you should not. You know, we've got a lot of people who work very, very hard and have done this for a long, long time and will continue to do that. But they deserve some answers and they deserve not to be operating on edge. And I think what we're asking for is not insurmountable. We're not asking for cash. We're asking for a guarantee. And I think in business, you know, we make deals and we get agreements and we tell the attorneys, go work, work the details of it. And, 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 you know, legal, legalese sometimes drag a little bit. I'm not just, you know, dissing any, any of our legal people, but, uh, you know, they've got dock management and all. And, and I, I'd say don't bother me with details. Just let's get on with it. And that's what we are at a point where we need to do. I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, thank you, General. But you know, the devil's in the details. So that's what we got to get to the details. All right, Mayor Reed, then we'll go ahead to the public communication and we'll bring this item up for a vote.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, I want to thank all the physicians and, and the staff and everyone that's here, um, employees from Jackson Hospital. Uh, it's been stated earlier, it's certainly been an integral part, uh, of this community. Um, we are always looking for solutions to things that we know impact, uh, the most people, whether that's public safety, whether that's public education, whether that's public health. Um, those are things, uh, in Alabama that tend to be the least funded, by the way. So when we look at things and we look at the, um, asks and demands that so many people have in our city, of people who come and work here or just come here, uh, to relax for a concert or whatever it may be, we're thinking about ways to improve the city. And we have to think about that from an objective perspective. All nine council members have projects that they would like to see done in their districts. Just about all of them have a lot of merit. They can only do a few of those projects because the money only goes so far. I also have projects that I would like to see done. Um, but again, we aren't able to get most of those done because of finances. So when we come to this body, uh, it is generally with the standpoint of what can we afford? Uh, what can we do? And what can we, what can we make the most impact, uh, with the least amount of financial resources? That's typically how we look at things. And over the last five years, that's proven to be very, very successful for us. We've been very intentional about that. And so we've gotten to the point where we've had the highest reserve, certainly the city has seen in the last thirty years. That, that's commendable. We've also gotten to a point where we've gotten, where we had the highest bond rate. That's commendable. For those who don't know what that is, that's your credit score as a city. That's not easy to do and nor is it easy for us just to discount. Because that has an impact on many things that we do throughout this city, whether it's buying fire trucks, whether it is investing in public parks, or whether it is investing in infrastructure. So all of those things are very, very, uh, important to us. So as we look and try to figure out, um, positive solutions in this community, uh, healthcare stands right at the top. Um, when we were talking about an occupational tax some five years ago, it was members from Pike Road, it was members from outside the city of Montgomery that blocked that. It was businesses that kept this city from having anywhere from forty-five to sixty-five million more dollars annually out of political spite. Nobody came to support us. This city council passed that. As we advocated for Medicaid expansion, as we look for that, I don't remember a resolution coming from the city council. That council is a different council we have right now, different leadership. But this mayor advocated for Medicaid expansion long before we got to the crisis moment. So when we get to the crisis moment, you want us to throw logic out the window? Well, you can't afford to do that as a CEO. And these gentlemen know that. Those of you who run your own businesses, you know that. So as a CEO of this city, I don't respond to things emotionally. I don't respond because I don't have the luxury to do that. We have to make decisions based on practicality and based on what's good for the whole. So when we think about this issue, this is not a new issue. I want to say for the record that the city of Montgomery provided one million dollars to Jackson Hospital, the previous administration, um, at Jackson, that is. I think that was two years ago for American Rescue Plan Act funds. I'm sure it went to good use. Um, I'm gonna trust that it did. I'm gonna trust that it helped. But here we are back again with a much, much bigger ask. And as has been said before, that ask wasn't the first time. So I want to give you that, that context because, you know, the decision and the position, I think many of the councils have stated is one that people feel passionate about because we understand how it impacts, uh, ourselves personally, our church members, our neighbors, our friends, our coworkers, and certainly many of you and those who could not be here. But that doesn't allow us to throw judgment, good judgment, out the window. So when we're thinking about healthcare solutions, as the president of the council just said, President Calhoun just mentioned, we got to think about things long term. And we can't respond because a private business was run very poorly. We can't respond because the board of that private business advocated some of its responsibilities. They're the ones who put you in this position. It's not the city of Montgomery. It's not the council. It's not the mayor. There should have been accountability on this a long time ago for the board members and for those that were running the day-to-day operations of this. I too have talked to medical professionals from Jackson. I too have talked to surgeons. I too have talked to other leaders. And, and I would say I've had some very good conversations. I think there's a future for Jackson Hospital. I don't know there's a future in this current form. But I think there's a future for Jackson Hospital. So we're, so we're pitting a doom and gloom scenario that if the city council doesn't vote for this tonight, then lose two thousand jobs. That's not true. That's a hundred percent false. And then we're painting the picture that if we give you twenty-point-five million dollars, all two thousand jobs stay. That's a hundred percent false. That's not true. So you need to understand that neither of those positions is entirely accurate. So from the city's standpoint, I want to make sure that we understand a few things. And, 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 Mr. President, forgive me. I, I thought I was having a few, few minutes before all of this got started. But I do think it's still important that we understand exactly what we're talking about as we look for long-term solutions. What is a DIP loan? What is a DIP loan? A debtor and possession loan, all right? So this is to maintain operations during bankruptcy and restructuring process. It says nothing about this going on for a year. Now, Alan, they said it would be six months. We would hope that it would be six weeks. There's no guarantee that it'd be six months. He can't predict that, nor can I. But a DIP loan, I want you to understand what this is. Are high-interest secure loans prioritizing bankruptcy proceedings. While they can facilitate restructuring, they also carry significant risk. Data from S and P Capital IQ indicates that the average DIP loan interest rate can range from eight to fifteen percent, above the prime rate, significantly higher than conventional lending. Crucially, based on our research, the city's guarantee will likely put it in a secondary position to the primary DIP lender, meaning the city will only be liable after the primary lender's claims are satisfied. This enhances the city's risk. This enhances our risk to do other things that many of you want us to do and have called your councilor about or have called the city about. So one of the things that we're asking for here, and I appreciate, uh, the councils who have already brought this up, is to secure independent legal and financial expertise to review the DIP long terms, including interest rates, collateral requirements, covenants, and default provisions. Very key. The devil's always in the details. Now, all the cities have done this at, at a varying rate of failure and success. There are many other things that are involved here as we look for long-term healthcare solutions. We cannot do that with a patchwork approach without a agreed-upon plan of what this means for Jackson Hospital. And really what it means for healthcare, not only in Montgomery, but central Alabama and the state. So one of the things that I want to make sure we do is we get that financial analysis. And we commission an independent, comprehensive financial audit. I don't know that we have all that information. Reviewing past financial statements, analysis of current assets and liabilities, projection of future revenue and expenses under various scenarios, assessment of the hospital's long-term financial viability, stress testing the city's budget under the potential burden of the loan guarantee. Now, that last bullet point is pretty important because I said we just got to sixty million dollars in reserves. So my question would be if we only had twenty million dollars in reserves, what conversation would be happening? So because we've been good stewards here at the city, we're now asked to take out one-third of our savings for a private business? Now, what was just mentioned by one of the councils was what we put into other jobs. I would ask this question. Suppose we had a twenty million dollar small business revolving loan fund or grant fund for existing small businesses? What do we think we could do with that? So while we're talking about the money that we put into big projects, if we had twenty million dollars to put in existing small businesses, that's economic development too. No one has brought up an issue like that, period. No one has brought up an issue of what we can do for existing small businesses that are run well, that do have good boards, that haven't, that haven't been practicing malfeasance. No one has called for that. But yet we're here and someone were to say, well, we've got to do twenty mil. If I were to bring an idea to any of these councils to do twenty million dollars, one-third of our reserves for any project that we've even talked about, planetary, cramped and bold, infrastructure, water and sewer, it would be shot down immediately. There would be, there would be no consequence of that. Doesn't matter the relevance, it wouldn't matter the importance. If I said, let's give the public schools twenty million dollars, I think that's pretty important. It would be shot down. We had to, we had to wrangle, I think, a couple of hundred thousand dollars and you'd have acted, you would act like that was five million dollars or two million dollars. We didn't give them that. So I think public education is important too. And again, it hasn't run itself into the ground under private leadership. So I want us to be very, very clear. Now, I'm gonna conclude with this. A rushed decision in this situation, in my opinion, is a mistake. It has long-term impacts that many on the council, I'm not sure have fully comprehended what that means to our credit, what it means to our bond rating, and what that will limit us to do moving further. One-third of the savings that we just got to. Because we did good work. We were good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. I could take half of the twenty million dollars and put together a small business fund for small businesses who have been working in this community for hundreds of years. Some of them, some just starting up. That would have the same economic impact. And if we're gonna set this precedent, maybe we should have that. And maybe we shouldn't worry about how much we're saving. Maybe we shouldn't worry about that. If we're just gonna bail out private businesses. But I also want to make sure that we're considering this. We need to think about what are we signing up for? And we've heard the scenarios as it relates to if everything goes well. But what if, what if it doesn't? And where does that put the city of Montgomery? I'm always concerned about the city as the only at-large member elected by the majority of people. I don't get into the whole district, this or that. It's the city, okay? So as a chief executive officer, I confer with our CFO, who has put us in this position financially under her leadership. She does not recommend that we move forward with this. And so I want to say this to those that are here and those who are watching, particularly those in the healthcare profession. We certainly want you here. We certainly need you to be here. But we have to have the right healthcare solution for this city, this county, this region, and this state. And we cannot do that with knee-jerk reactions in crisis moments that are brought upon by bad management and poor leadership. So I want us to be very, very clear that I'm gonna protect the city's financial interests first. That's what we were elected to do. To be the fiduciary, our fiduciary responsibility is to the city. It's not to any business I may like, any business I may not like. It is, we have fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Montgomery. And so if we're gonna continue to have this discussion, I think that the questions that have been asked should be answered. And I'm not telling you or promising anybody what outcome that's gonna guarantee or not guarantee. But we've got to make sure that if we're gonna be a part of this, the due diligence must be made, further changes must be agreed upon, and certainly regional commitments. And a viable turnaround plan have to be very clear to each and every person, not just to me on this council, but each and every person that is a resident of the city of Montgomery. This is not a city entity by statute. Some might say that the county has more by the code of Alabama. But somehow it's landed on our lap because we have been open to discussion. Open to discussion is not necessarily a pathway or guarantee to yes until we get the information we need. And I think it's very important as, as I close, Mr. President, that you understand, the council understands. I've been having discussions for a positive healthcare solution around this, uh, right now. this right now. I feel very strongly that most of these people, if not all of them, would not be out of work. I feel very strongly that there are healthcare solutions that don't involve the city of Montgomery guaranteeing 20.5 million dollars, and I feel very strongly under the right circumstances, we could get to that point where we aren't having this discussion with these gentlemen here, and we're talking about what healthcare looks like in a different form and maybe under a new regime or new leadership to move us forward. With that, I conclude my remarks, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Samaski?
We have this, we have the resolution, and as I said earlier, we have a substitute that I think gives us all the due diligence information that we need to help move this thing forward, to give people in front of us the guarantee that they need. I think we've had enough discussion about this, and so I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
No, Mr. Samaski, hold up before we make the motion to adopt. We'll explain the ordinance and the resolution, but I'm gonna do my due diligence because we did have nine members to sign up to speak on this, and if you guys are still willing to come talk to the polling, we'll allow you two minutes because I think we're gonna get redundant on what we're saying. So first, thank you, guys, thank you. We're gonna vote this tonight, and we're gonna, I got Dr. David Thrasher. Please turn the timer on so everybody can see their time.
Thank you very much. First of all, may I want to commend you for the way you handled this billboard crisis and Chief Gray Boys, he's doing a great job. You know, I've been a critic for six months.
Dr. Thrasher, I need you to speak about Jackson Hospital. We're gonna keep it to what we got on the paper.
I just want to commend.
He's gonna be here five minutes after this meeting.
Yes, sir, okay, so I apologize. But I've been laser-focused on crime for six months, I've been laser-focused on healthcare for over 40 years. Our group, Dr. Bill Siliski's sitting there, he's president of Montgomery Police and Consultants, we treat all the critically ill people in this city, okay? If they own a ventilator, we're gonna see it. C.C., you know that, and many of others, we treat it in a hospital. We do not have the ability to not have a hospital, okay, in Jackson. What will happen next Wednesday, if you don't approve a motion to guarantee something? What will happen next Wednesday? More than likely, there'll be a protective Allen Act. Y'all know what that is, that means they'll give, everybody that's sitting in this audience, 60 days, we're gonna close the doors, okay? And that point, 50% of our nurses are gone, et cetera, et cetera. We need to go into Chapter 11 bankruptcy, I'm all for that. I've talked to many of y'all, and I said, I would not sign this unless I had an ironclad guarantee that the city was first in line before bankruptcy and after bankruptcy. I've talked to the CEO, acting CEO, as well as the lawyers for the hospital and the city, they guarantee me that's in there. I agree with Andrew, get that, I wouldn't just give away free money, alright? What happens if we do not do this, okay, and they close, okay? We have 60 days to transfer 230 patients, easier said than done. Let's just send them over to Babys. Last Tuesday, 200 people sat at the three Babys facilities in the hallways waiting on a bed. We don't have, this time of year, we're always stretched, okay? We don't have that option. What will happen next? These guys will probably close the OB. 22 counties in Alabama have no OB, including Shelby County, they moved out. It's a healthcare problem. Jackson takes care of a lot of the poor people that are having babies, okay? Now, we're lucky we've got East Montgomery, they're the baby capital of Alabama, I think, but people will die, okay? And so that's that, okay? Is this feasible? I do think it's feasible, okay? 20 million, 500, you know, is that a lot of money? I remember Senator Durkson said, a long time ago, he said, well, this gonna cost a billion. Well, billion here, billion there, soon enough, you're talking about real money. Same thing here, but we've got the money. Now, y'all know, we've got almost 20 million dollars mayor in budgeted, unspent parks and rec and police money, okay? Y'all are talking about 200 million dollar civic center. I love civic centers. Andrew, I love trails, okay? Ed's not here, oh, he is here. I love trails though, okay? But that makes you quality of life. Hospitals gives you life, so. I apologize, I'm an emotional person, and I apologize for that, but it's very deep in my heart, and I just pray that y'all would do this. Give it a chance, it's a gamble. No businessman in the world would come in and look at Viner Hospital. It's a horrible investment.
Thank you, Dr. Thrasher. Thank you, sir, appreciate your patience, your time is up.
My time's up, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Bill Silaski?
I had a fancy speech prepared, and I'm not gonna do that, I'm just gonna get right to it. For 30 years, I've been with Jackson Hospital, and in the past two years, we've seen the erosion of Jackson Hospital. The fine physicians that are here now, oh, who's left? We have lost great doctors. We've lost probably one of the best thoracic doctors in the southeast. That will continue to happen if you don't help us. Yes, Jackson Hospital will be saved, they'll figure it out, but what's gonna happen is it's just gonna be a shell of a hospital that's left, okay? As you know, this city cannot continue with a one-hospital system. Baptist Hospital is probably not here, but they're watching online and praying to dear God that you do the right thing because they'll get overrun, and they know that. And in all due deference, Ms. Johnson, I hope I'm taking care of your loved one, but in time, that's not gonna happen. So I don't understand anything that the mayor is talking about or what you're talking about from a finance standpoint. I don't care. What I do care is our patients, and, you know, Dr. Thrasher's right. I mean, we as physicians are here to take care of our patients. We have to rely on you to help us do the right thing and our corporate people. We didn't ask to get in this situation. We know our hospital somehow, to be perfectly honest with you, was run like crap for the last five years. That's not my fault. That's not their fault, but they're trying to help us and we're asking you to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany Pollan, Roland Pollan?
Good afternoon. Much like the last speaker, I had something prepared, I even have a colleague look over it, but now I'm just gonna speak from my heart. I've been at Jackson for two years, as of yesterday, that was my one year as an RN. Something that I haven't heard anybody discuss is how the decisions made today will affect higher education. If we take a look back, we have five nursing school programs in this city alone. We have Troy University, Montgomery, we have Auburn University, Montgomery, we have South University, we have Trenton State Community College, and Faulkner University's new program. All five of those institutions have nursing school students that work hand-in-hand with the registered nurses, staff, and administration that exist at Jackson Hospital. The clinical hours, the simulation lab hours, the preceptorship hours that are required not only by those nursing school programs, but by also the Alabama Board of Nursing. Those requirements help us to get our registration required to get our licenses. If you talk about the programs outside of the city, those programs are Auburn University, Troy University Main Campus, Lurleen B. Wallace, Jack State, there's numerous more, those are just the ones off the top of my head. I've emailed each one of you the same thing this morning. This is a discussion that's not being had. There is a huge demand for nurses, it's been projected decades behind us and ahead, there is a shortage. There's not enough nursing school instructors, but if we allow hospitals that partner with these programs to shut their doors, it's gonna impact us even more. So I thank you for your time and your encouragement, I thank all of my colleagues, my coworkers, my friends, my families. Testimonies from patients, testimonies from us as staff are great, but think about the higher education and the students. The student nursing apprenticeship program that the Board of Nursing has been implementing in partnerships with hospitals, the new, I'm sorry, the new nursing support tech certification that the board is trying to get in development, all of that will be impacted based on these decisions. Where will these students apprentices and nursing support tech go? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody's been talking, a lot of information's moved around. Well, let me tell you a little bit about me and nursing. My name is Pam Nick, I am the Assistant Chief Nurse and Officer and Director of Critical Care. Today, we have 22 patients in critical care, and the majority have a lung ventilator. These are very sick patients. We have an intensive care group, we have hospice group, and these are people that are taking care of these patients along with nursing and respiratory, environmental services, and everybody else within the hospital. That's a large group of people. Let me tell you, though, about what I do. I've been nursing going on 36 years. I'm here at Jackson because I love it. I'm not from Alabama, I'm from Mississippi, my family's in Mississippi, but my husband and I stay here because we feel like the Lord has put us here for a reason, and that is to take care of these patients. We feel like this is our calling, this is our home. These are my family members, right here, everyone of them, everyone of them. We love what we do, and we want to continue what we do at Jackson. Thank you.
General Crowe, you wanna come back? Or you took your time, you good? Gilbert Darrington?
I'm Gilbert Darrington, I'm the CEO of Health Services Incorporated, HSI, and that's the, we're the entity, the FQHC here, that the city council several years ago invested a million dollars in our organization to build that nice facility we have on the Jackson Hospital campus. And I must say that I walked the halls of Jackson Hospitals as HR director for roughly 12 or 13 years or so, really have a, really compassionate and have a passion for Jackson Hospital. We actually work with Jackson and Baptist though, very close to make sure that our underserved population has the care that they need in our city. So I understand that you all have a very tough decision to make, and I understand the financials of all of that, and I don't envy your position in that, but I'm just here to let you know that as an FQHC, if Jackson Hospital goes away, our healthcare delivery system in Montgomery would collapse. We, as an FQHC, we would love to have additional patients, but we couldn't absorb the volume that we actually run through or that goes through Jackson Hospital. So in your consideration of whether you vote yea or nay for the, what's the ask that you have received, just know that we would run out of supplies, we don't have the staff, and we don't have the resources to handle the number of patients that the support, the city, it would take to continue for all of us to receive the care that we receive in the city of Montgomery. And again, it is a huge ask and it is a huge decision to make, but just know that Jackson Hospital is an intricate part of the overall healthcare delivery system in Montgomery. So thank you for the time that you allowed me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Darrington. Alright, Mr. Samaski?
Mr. President?
Ms. Blalow?
I thought you called somebody's name, I didn't care.
No, no, no. Andrew Samaski.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President?
Ms. Beard?
Can I just have one minute?
You got the mic.
Okay, I appreciate everybody in this room coming down today from Jackson's Hospital. When I look out, I see doctors that has taken care of me, and it's emotional. I don't care what anybody says, it is an emotional thing. I see people out here, and the doctor who said it left, if he hadn't been there the day when my husband was so sick, he'd have died. And these nurses in here took care of us for three years. The healthcare system in Montgomery is crumbling. I've talked to doctors, everybody has, this is what we, this is the scuttlebutt for a week and a half, two weeks, whatever, but if Jackson Hospital falls, the burden that it's gonna put on Baptist South, which gets every gunshot victim, stabbing victim, and that's the only trauma critical care in the city, it will go under two very, very quickly. So I hear you. It's 20.5 million dollars, it's a lot of money for the city. It disappoints me that our other colleagues from other elected officials and surrounding counties have not come to help us, and I was in a meeting last night and I was very disappointed at some of the comments that were made. But I know this, if I get sick tonight, I'm hoping I can go to Jackson's, and there's a doctor there to take care of me, and I hope and pray I get a room, and I don't have to go an hour and a half, two hours up to Birmingham or somewhere else to take care of me, because it's not happening in South, you can't get in. I'm on the, right now with a nurse there. We're on the verge of, everybody in this room grew up with, your emergency room for the day is St. Mark's. Your emergency room for the day is Jackson's Hospital. We all grew up with, it's 10 o'clock, where are your children? What we're gonna grow up with, what our kids are gonna grow up next with, is that today, Jackson's Hospital's on diversion. Baptist South is on diversion, and that is very, very sad. I applaud you, thank you for being the healthcare, and thank you for taking care of us all these years. Thank you.
Alright, I have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution, and everybody has a copy of the substitute in front of them, so just, for those who haven't been here, make sure we do this right. Motion to adopt with the intent to substitute?
Motion to adopt and then a motion to substitute.
Motion to adopt and then a motion to substitute.
Mr. Chairman, we'll call for the substitute first.
Okay, well, we're gonna vote on the substitute, but we need to make a change in paragraph four, where it says, where has agreed.
Are you on the first page?
On the first page, yes, ma'am. Whereas, and now when we get to have agreed, this is not to agree to anything, this is to negotiate.
Have agreed to? Have agreed to extend financing to the hospital?
Yes, negotiate the financing, so we're not agreeing to then substitute, because we haven't had these things provided.
Well, wait, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. So when we just spoke earlier, obviously, we are waiting on the final, whatever the final terms are, that agreement that we have.
We can wait on the terms, but when we say what we're doing, it says we have agreed.
But, well, we have agreed, assuming the rest of this.
We don't assume.
The substitute, well, no, that's what the, Stacy, can I ask the question then? Why the request to change have agreed to intend to? How does that alter the resolution, please?
We can change to intend to, but not agree. I'm all with that.
I'm just asking what the change represents.
Intend, certain intent to extend financing. It could say certain intent to extend financing to the hospital instead of have agreed.
I believe if the resolution says you agreed to negotiate, if you don't reach an agreement that is acceptable to the council, then you don't have to execute an agreement.
Okay, so let's put, negotiate after agree.
But if it says you intend to negotiate, I think that's satisfactory.
So instead of intent, say have agreed to negotiate?
Yeah, negotiate needs to be in there.
You're saying that essentially it holds up the same?
I think the council's intent, or the council members I spoke to, is not to say, not to agree that they're going to sign an agreement, that they're agreeing to attempt to negotiate an agreement.
And that's one. Come on, Andrew, read it, let's go, ma'am.
Hold on, Mr. President, hold on, Mr. President.
We're not gonna change what we're gonna do. I mean, we gonna keep reading? Twenty, twenty million dollars to take, and that's not what we're doing. Hey, we ain't supporting the less than $20 million estate that ain't great.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Ain't great.
David Smith, Brad A. Ram, attorney for the city. I don't have a problem with that change. Intend to extend.
Okay, make sure the clerk, what makes sure the clerk has it correct? You agree to attempt to negotiate an agreement?
No, no. Have. It's what is it?
Come back. Let them come back.
Intend to?
Let them come back.
Instead of have agreed.
Yes, have the intent to.
Have agreed to attempt to negotiate an agreement?
Mr. President? We should have just carried this over into Tuesday because it's, we are not in agreement. And we are so far from being on the same page, and we're just, I have no problem with the substitute, but we're just getting it today.
I think the word was intend to negotiate. Is that right?
To negotiate an agreement.
All right, we're good with that. All right, go ahead, Mrs. Samaski.
All right. Do I have to do a double substitute now, or is that in the substitute?
No. He has made a motion to amend. Now, there's going to be three votes. You're going to vote on the amendment as Mr. Calhoun presented it, then the motion to substitute as amended, and then the motion to adopt.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the amendment.
Well, he needs to call, he's made the motion.
Oh, he has, okay.
So, he just needs to call for the vote on the motion to amend, to add intent.
All in favor of to amend? Please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mrs. Samaski?
Now, you have the motion before you substitute as amended. That is on the floor. You call for the vote on that one?
Okay. All in favor to vote on the substitute as amended with the intent to negotiate? Please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Now, the motion to.
Motion on the main motion. All in favor to adopt? Please raise your hand. Now, let me explain to you guys what we just did. We just put this on the table with the intent, the information that we have asked for to do our due diligence from the city of Montgomery, to get this information for them before we go forward and negotiate on the $20.5 million. Now, I know they say on Tuesday, the doors are going to close. We pray that that don't happen. We praying that on Tuesday, we can have the same energy in front of our state legislator, in front of our governor, because we believe that Jackson is worthy to stay in Montgomery. We're trying to fix healthcare, not just Jackson Hospital. You know, whatever the next hospital come before us, we want to fix something that we have a long-term solution that we fix there. We're not saying no to Jackson. We're just saying, give it us time to fix this so we can be long-term. We're not here six, eight, nine, 10 months with healthcare. This is all about profit. And as I said, it's not political. It's about doing the right thing for the people that we serve here in this city. All right? Thank you. So, we have the vote on number five. We're moving forward.
Hey, Mr. Calhoun, real quick, make sure they understand that this does not hinder them from making payroll and everything else. This is.
You don't know that.
Well, I mean, they told me that.
All right, thank you.
Item six, resolution.
Doc, number six.
No, we're going to hold on to suspension of the rules. That discussion.
Item number six, resolution. Center on Calhoun Drive, according to Alamo County Community Center.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
A motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.